Alright. You ready?
I'm ready.
I got it together. A little late, my apologies. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance Birthday Girl.
Which one?
Me?
No, which birthday?
Which birthday? That's none of your business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday.
Okay. We have received. I heard it, I don't see it. And that brings us to item number five, Adoption and Approval of the Agenda. Five point one, Approval of the Agenda for October 23rd, 2018. Next to you.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Then six, Approval of the Minutes. Six point one, Approval of the Minutes of October 9th, 2018.
So.
Second.
We were all here, yes.
Exactly.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, here we go. Here are the good times. Item seven, Special Recognitions, Reports, and Presentations. Seven point one, Students of the Month for October 2018. Let's start with Kenworth. I just did guess the month. Kenworth, the record? Alright, so let me know who you'd like to call up first. We turn right through the footies, you're gonna face, you're gonna face the board trustees. Yeah, go ahead and call them up before you start talking, make sure they get all the way here. Devon? Becky? It's always fun to be the first one. Present you with your beautiful award, and then I'm gonna bring you over here. You're gonna stand there, and you're gonna smile. And parents, you're welcome to walk around and take videos or pictures. You're never gonna bother us when they're saying great things about your kids. Laughing. Take it away.
My name is Katie Hancock, and I'm an eighth grade leadership student from Kenorth Junior High. Kenorth Junior High is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Devon Salus. Devon has been chosen Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is one of our most outstanding student athletes. Devon's teachers were eager to see in her face. Mr. Eklund, Devon's history teacher, said Devon is a wonderful student. She is always pleasant and on task, and does a great job on every assignment. Devon also contributes to class discussions in clear, precise, and elegant ways. She is truly delight to have in class. Mr. Schminn, Devon's science teacher, eagerly added that Devon is personable and a team player who collaborates well with her group members during laps. Devon is a great student. Not only is Devon a great student, but she's also an outstanding and dedicated Level 10 gymnast. Devon has participated in gymnastics for 12 years, and has been training and competing competitively for Dream Extreme Gym in Vacaville for the last seven years. When Devon is not in Kenorth, excelling in the classroom, she can be found training in the gym 25 to 30 hours a week. Devon was proud to share that last February, she competed in her first elite competition in Palm Springs. While she enjoys all the events that she treats and competes in, Devon shared that the uneven bars are her favorite events. After high school, Devon would like to earn a college scholarship in gymnastics to a Division 1 university, preferably from the University of Berkeley. While in college, Devon would like, would like to earn degrees and pursue a career in medicine. Devon's mom added that Devon loves 80's music, and that her favorite TV show is Friends. Devon also loves steak and hanging out with her friends. Devon is driven, goal-oriented, thoughtful, kind, sweet, and very emotionally mature for her age. We at Kenorth could not agree more. Congratulations Devon.
How about your family in the room?
And my dad.
So you can say stand, we'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that, and the people that she has behind her, and we'd like to give you. Okay, see another spiel. Right for the camera, big smiles.
Kenorth Junior High School is proud to introduce our other October Student of the Month, Tyler Colombo. Tyler was chosen Student of the Month by his team of teachers because he is one of Kenorth's hardest-working and most inspiring success stories. Attentive, disciplined, respectful, and helpful are just a few of the superlatives Tyler's teachers used to describe him. Mr. Schminn, Tyler's science teacher, enthusiastically shared that Tyler eagerly participates in classroom discussions and is always willing to assist his classmates. Tyler goes above and beyond in peer mentoring with a great demeanor. He skews himself, he skews confidence in himself and his aptitude for success. Tyler's an awesome student. This mannerist, Tyler's accelerated math teacher, added that Tyler is enthusiastic, and he is always willing to participate in class. Tyler puts great effort into every assignment. Tyler is a great math student. Tyler shared that he is most proud of being able to successfully navigate and manage his attention-deficit hyperactivity disorder. Tyler's determination and belief in himself is truly inspiring. It should also be recognized that not only is Tyler managing his ADHD, but he is also taking seven classes this year rather than the normal six, and excelling in all of them. Not only is Tyler an outstanding student, but he also gives back to his community by volunteering at the San Rosa Food Bank. In his free time, Tyler enjoys writing and developing stories and movie scripts. After high school, Tyler would like to attend Cal State Northridge and study film production and screenwriting. Perhaps one day we will see Tyler receiving his Oscar for Best Original Screenplay. Tyler's mom, Krista, added that Tyler is really finding his way this year. School is going really well, Tyler is really coming into his own. We are very proud of Tyler. Congratulations Tyler.
Are you related to any of the people in the audience? It showed, just a little bit. Did you go ahead and say? Alright, who's next? I'll let you go ahead.
We are pleased to present Greta Apple as one of our October 2018 Students of the Month.
Big smile.
Greta was born on August 23rd, 2005, in San Francisco. She's an excellent student, an accomplished ballet dancer, an active community volunteer, and a great friend to others. Greta loves the arts and luxuries in the culture of the Bay Area. She is now in the senior workshop at Petaluma School of Ballet, and is excited to become an apprentice, earning her boy shoes after many years of dance. Greta frequents the Art and Science Museums of San Francisco, and loves to attend the symphony. Community service is a huge part of Greta's life. She began volunteering her time at local food banks several years ago, becoming even more involved for Girl Scouts. She participated in bake sales to help families in need, and made cards for soldiers overseas and elderly people who receive meals on wheel services. Each Thanksgiving, Greta helps her dad in his workshop bring food to families in need. She was honored for her citizenship at the end of both sixth and seventh grades. In her spare time, Greta enjoys baking, watching movies, and being with her friends. During school vacations, Greta enjoys, Greta and family enjoys lakes, mountains, rivers, and the ocean. Greta's goals are to improve her public speaking skills and to travel as much as she can. Greta's math teacher says, Greta is conscientious and has a great work ethic, and is generous in sharing her skills and knowledge with other students. Our math curriculum is very collaborative, and Greta is an asset to any team. Her parents add, we are so proud of all her hard work. Greta is all we can hope for in a daughter, and is a true friend to those around her. She is an inspiration to all of us. Greta Apple is an outstanding representative for Petaluma Junior High School, and a model example of student of Petaluma.
When you're ready, can you stand? We can give you a round. And do I visit, or do I not tell you to introduce yourself?
Oh.
Who you are?
Hi, I'm Georgia Peard, and I'm in seventh grade at Petaluma Junior High.
I'm Ava Staub, I'm one of our eighth grade leadership officers at Petaluma Junior High.
And next?
Zachary Gutierrez. Petaluma Junior High School is proud to present Zach as one of our October 2018 Student of the Month. Zach was born on December 28th, 2004, right near Petaluma. He is an excellent student, a fine musician, an incredible artist, and a genuinely kind and caring individual. Academics is one of Zach's many strengths. He earns great grades and excels in higher-level classes. He also contributes to the school community by performing in both the honors and after-school jazz bands, with his impressive trumpet lane. Beyond music, Zach contributes to the beauty of the community through his art and community service. Zach's artwork has been a source of pride since he won his first art contest in second grade. His artwork can be viewed periodically on display at the Petaluma Arts Center. Zach intends to continue performing well in school and eventually make a career related to his art. Community service has also been an important part of Zach's life. As a student in Valle Vista, he served on the student council and participated in the school qualification activities. He currently volunteers his time at a local animal shelter. Zach makes a great impression with the adults in his life. His PE teacher says, Zach is consistent in his work and effort, and also has a good sense of humor. His parents are thrilled and very proud to know that Zach has been recognized with the award for Student of the Month. He works very hard. To be rewarded for his effort is an experience he will not only look back on with pride, but use as motivation to continue his education. He is a very special kid. We love him to the moon. We agree that Zachary Gutierrez is an exceptional young man who very much deserves the title of Student of the Month. We are pleased to have him represent Petaluma Junior High School.
Alright, how about Casa Grande?
Our first student of the month from Casa Grande is April Lou.
Do you want to do it when she can come, or do you want to accept?
I'll accept.
Sure? Okay, you gotta stand and look pretty then. Like everybody else.
April Lou is a hardworking and fun-loving senior at Casa Grande. What makes April stand out most is her passion and achievements in the sport of ultimate frisbee. In addition to being an integral female player on Casa's club during the school year, April has been playing on the Bay Area Youth Girls Club Team for two years, representing California at the annual youth club championships in Minnesota. She is currently the captain of the U-20 girls team, leading her team to the fourth place at Nationals this past August. In the offseason, April is busy working as a sterilization tech at Dr. Michael D.'s auto dentistry, setting on Casa's, setting on Casa's varciobola team, performing the symphonic and marching bands on the baritone saxophone, and maintaining her grades in all of her AP classes. Next year, April is hoping to major in biofermacy at UCLA or UC San Diego to either go to pharmaceutical research for forensic science.
And if you need us to come by campus or something to acknowledge her, that's nice.
Our final student of the month is Shreya S. Campoli.
Congratulations. Okay, you know the drill.
Shreya S. Campoli has taken numerous honors in AP classes throughout high school, achieving As in all of them as he continually strives for academic success. After high school, he wants to attend a four-year university to study, to study computer science, with his dream schools being Stanford, MIT, or Carnegie Mellon. As a lover of logic and reasoning, Shreya is naturally drawn to computer science from a relatively young age, and he hopes to be on the frontier of robotics and artificial intelligence in future. Shreya is also extremely dedicated to CAFSA's Academic Academy program. After winning numerous medals last year and leading his team to regional and state level championships, he is now the captain of the team, plays a integral role in instructing slash coaching the team for the upcoming year. Apart from academics, Shreya enjoys playing tennis and ultimate frisbee, making music on the clarinet as part of Casa's symphonic band, symphonic band, and working with kids through various volunteer, volunteering opportunities around the community. He's particularly proud of a program that he started at the local Boys and Girls Club that introduces children in fourth grade and sixth grade to beginner-level computer coding, with the hope that the kids would be inspired to pursue technology-related careers.
So, September's not here. Okay, so we're gonna try again next one?
Try again.
Sure, okay. Alright, Petaluma, come on down.
I don't normally come and do this, and you can do this far better than I. I just wanted to point out that tonight we have two remarkable students who came, come from, come to high school in their own ways. Some schools, some kids come to high school ready to rock and roll, they're, they're ready, they're, they're ready to work, their skillset's perfect. Some kids come to high school and then aren't. And what's amazing about Petaluma High and Casa and all these schools is how a school can influence a student to go from, "I'm not quite ready," to, "I'm gonna go to the starters" in the four years that they're at high school. And you'll see an example of both that, so.
So my name is Jorge De La Loza, I am a vice president and also signed spirit captain, for those who haven't seen before. I'd like to call Kylie Payton up. Kylie has challenged herself academically throughout the past four years of high school while playing three different sports. She played volleyball during her freshman and sophomore year, and has played basketball and softball all four years at PHS, each earning two outstanding Scholar-Athlete plaques. She has received recognition for her GPA of 4.0 or above. As a sophomore, Kylie made the varsity girls' basketball team and became a starter by the end of the season. Also that year, she was the recipient of the Coach's Award because her coach felt she embodied the ideal Trojan girls' basketball player. Kylie's junior season of basketball, she was chosen as a captain and helped lead her team to an undefeated season in league and an SCL league championship. She earned first team All-League honors, led the team in three-pointers, and was number three in the league for three-pointers made. In softball, Kylie received Defensive Player of the Year both years on JV. Her junior year of softball, she received the Coach's Award for her commitment, versatility, and willingness to work hard. During her junior-senior year, she added more to her agenda by enrolling in four AP classes, US History, Psychology, Economics, and Government, and Statistics. Also her senior year, Kylie became an active Lincro leader and a member of the Trojan True Club, and began working in retail. Her future plans are to become a pediatric dentist through studying at a four-year university. So our next one is David Aragon. Petaluma High has been the home of David Aragon for almost four years. David knows that once he leaves, he will miss the amazing staff and his fellow students. At the beginning of David's first two years in high school, David tended to slack off and really showed minimum effort to do anything. If it was homework, projects, and/or participating during class, it was usually mediocre in quality. Junior year hit David like a truck because he realized that there was a lot riding on junior year, and he had to transition from a slacker and an antisocial person to the kid taking AP US History. By the way, this class is one of the top classes with a heavy workload. And joining a club like Lincro. He made it through junior year with As and Bs, and in turning a new chapter in his life, he decided to try out ASB slash leadership, and take charge of Ms. Richardson's club, BSA, otherwise known as Bellego Students and Famsters. It's not only David, but the other kids who have the same dream as him and want their voices heard in any school, what is often lost in the shadows. He has made bonds with special people with different personalities from his, and in different cultures. David has scratched the surface, it is unknown what he will do after he leaves, but he knows that he will not sit still and wait for something to happen, even if that, what freshman David would have done. Also something I'd like to add is, David didn't write it down on here, but he's also my very best friend, and he's a great friend of that.
I try to remember in my everyday life, when I think I'm really busy, what all of the students in our schools are doing. It's amazing. All the volunteer service, and the classes, and the music, and the sports, and all the things you guys are doing. It's quite a joy, very impressive. Makes us feel a little bit like underachievers up here. We're very, very proud of you. Look at your name on the plaque for yours to come and see. Because Mark will go back, Phoebe does it all the time, she brings people in to show them her name.
Twice.
Yeah, oh, I wasn't gonna do it. She's up there twice. We're gonna go ahead and take a break, because it sounds like some of you do homework and other things. So we're gonna take a few minutes to let you file out without you feeling like you've disrupted the rest of the meeting. By all means, stay, we have all kinds of exciting things to talk about. But we'll take a three-minute recess if you'd like. That's good. Take it away. Seven point two, Report for Christ of God Educational Services, 2017, California Assessment Student Performance and Progress, CASP results for English Language Arts, Math, and Early Assessment Program. Take it away.
Thank you. So I gave you each a copy of the presentation. I changed, changed one thing. So you'll have to pay attention to figure out what's here. I've got a change here. So this is year four, year four of the California Assessment Student Performance and Progress, otherwise known as CASP, right, replaced the CSTs of the start program. So this is year four, and just again as a reminder, so students are assessed in grades three through eight and 11. So no nine, no 10, no 12. And they're tested in English and in Math, in those four domains. And we are also now, this was year two of the California Science Test. So there will be results at some point, but they, they haven't been made public. So there was a field test two years ago, and, so there's a pilot test two years ago and a field test last year. And again, that is, that's California's way of meeting the federal requirement of assessing students in science. So we no longer give the Life Science Test, we have our own California Science Test, the CASP. So just a reminder, so the students can score, or their scores are categorized in one of these four performance levels. And the goal that we're looking for is meeting the standard or exceeding the standard, that's what we're shooting for, so levels three and four. And within the results that we get, there's more to it than just that performance level. There's how the students do in these different claim areas. So we get this, parents get this, we show this to the staff as well. So how do you get access to these? So the state sends to the district student score reports at the start of the year, after they've been assessed over the summer. We mail a copy home to the parents, we also put one in the Q File. That will change next year, they will no longer be supplying those. So that it'll be up to each district to decide whether or not they will print them and mail them, whether they will send them digitally, or what. So the state's saving some money on printing costs. Won't be sending those, mailing them. You can also go to the CASP website, it looks just like this. You can look for any school, district, any school, any county, pick web results. And then also, these results are a piece of the dashboard, which you may be familiar with. So the dashboard will be coming out in December, of course it'll be December. So these results are one of the many indicators that's included in the dashboard. We also have the, these results uploaded into Aries, and then also with our Luminate Student Data Management System, which is, which, which is how I gather all the data to show you. So, one of the issues in the past was, we have Petaluma City Elementary District, the high school district, and they also have every charter. So if you went to the state website right here, you can't pull up Petaluma City Schools and see how we did together, or how we did in all third grade, and so on and so forth. So you can only pull up elementary district, only the high school, only the charter separately. There's no way to really gather all the information.
So like at, may I come in? Actually, I may ask you to come in too, I don't know. It just dawned on me that I did receive results for my Petaluma High student, but not for my BAP to PAC student.
Over the summer?
Yeah, I didn't get, I didn't get results for them, so would there be a reason? I think it's just that you have the same.
They'll be sent out from here. So, yeah. So we, we can pull them out with Claire, do you want? Yeah, we get those.
Interesting, see if the whole site didn't, or just some random line got stuck on me.
I can follow. That's the first I heard.
They're like, "We don't want you to see what those two kids scored." Just throw it home.
So, the beauty of Luminate, or this is year two with Luminate, is Luminate can give us a snapshot of the entire district of every grade level, charters, regular schools, everything, all together. So now we finally are able to aggregate all that. So, I changed this one because I wanted to get right to the meat. So here's, here's the meat. So we continue to outpace the county and the state in both English and Math. So, as a combined unit of city schools, 60% of our students in Math exceeded the standard in English, 47% of them have exceeded in Math. So those are the good things, it's the good news. So, I also include here a snippet from a press article. So, San Rosa City Schools last year did not give this assessment at all due to the virus. So their results aren't in here. But if you look at English, and as our district separated out, high school is 62, Petaluma City is 55. Together, together they make up that 60. So, second highest in English, aside from West, I know in County High. And then you can see our results in Math. So, what we did in this new system is we maintained our high achievement. So we didn't, didn't make any marked improvement or any declines. We basically stayed right around where we happened. So this is the fourth year, and we keep scoring right around.
I have a question though. The 11th grade DAP results for Math? That's low.
I'll, I'll get that. Okay, there's that one.
Jump ahead, I don't know.
So, we sent out a press release about this, and I did get, I gave you one response, asking how we could, you know, how we put such a rosy spin on these numbers when there were some declines. So as a district, right, this is, this is the district overall, this is all the schools. So, we do break it down, look at each school, each grade level, see what the trends are. So, overall, it looks like we maintain, and we did. But there are areas of growth and decline within our district, within our grades, within our schools. So, we break all that down, look at that, where's the question? So I'm just gonna go over the English results, so, English, all the students, all district. So, the way this is formatted is anything above that line are students who met the standard, right? Either met or exceeded. Anything below are those that didn't meet the standard. So, 60% of students. And then also there's this other piece, this is somewhat hard to explain, but average distance from Level 3. So Level 3 is the standard of the four levels. So what they do is they take every student and calculate their distance from Level 3. They may be below, they may be right at it, they may be above. And they take all that data, crunch it, and tell us on average, our students are 10 points above Level 3. So, for whatever use that is.
Is your page?
Because some people could be way low, and some people way high, and then that, those two things get put together and then back in that matrix. So it's interesting. It's here. I don't know quite what to do with it. So here is, I looked at the last two years, so we can do this in a little bit as well, if you check our results. So, we have, two years ago, right here, 59% of the district overall. So, we have, two years ago, right here, fifty-nine percent of the district overall, and this last year, sixty. So, we made slight improvement over the last year in English. And you can see where our students performed in each of the four performance levels. Sometimes you can, you can spot trends. You may have more, more of those who met the standard move up to exceed the standard. You may have kids, you know, move up or down in here, but we're pretty much, we have one percent higher exceeding standard, one percent lower than or met. So, that could have been those, some of those kids moving out. And then we had one percent fewer not even counted. All right. So, we also look at these results by subgroup. So, that was all students overall, which is this left, this left column. But we also break it down by all of our subgroups. And also, our socioeconomic, a low socioeconomic English learners and students with disabilities. And these two right here, the low socioeconomic and English learners, these are the students who specifically addressed in the LCAT along with all students. So, these are the unduplicated that we speak to in the LCAT. So, what this shows you is, on average, our students in the district in English had a performance level of two point seven. So, what this shows you is where we have either subgroups that are exceeding, they're above average, or where we have performance gaps. And so, when we look at school single plan, we look at the LCAT, we're trying to identify where these gaps are and look for improvement, look for ways to close that gap. So, math. So, math is a different story. So, while it's definitely lower than English, it still is higher than the county, higher than the state. And this is one of those areas where everyone is having difficulty. I'll show you later on a different, a different chart where students year after year increase in English. In math, it almost has the opposite trend for whatever reasons. I'll show you that in a little bit.
Have you noticed that trend since they introduced Common Core math, that it's kind of gone down?
I honestly, I, I can't compare. We have four years of this data and then we had two years of no data. And then we had the old CSTs. So, really, all we have is.
What's here?
This to compare with. So, it's hard to say exactly when Common Core came in. But how they assess us definitely.
But it should be, you should see a decline because the Common Core math standards are grade level bump higher.
It's really difficult, Common Core math.
Plus, in our district, you don't have to take a math class in eleventh grade. You could have met your graduation requirement. And so, you're still taking math at the end of your eleventh grade year. So, everybody has to take English. So.
You're still being tested on it, isn't it? Yeah. But the kids that are going to college have to take.
But, but aside from us, it's across the state. Math, math is, is the, is the area that's really, you know, the focus of.
Yeah.
Yes. So, you can see overall in math, we dropped one percentage point. So, when, when you see the dashboard in December, that, that will still be considered maintained. So, our status in English was high and we maintained that status. Our status in math was medium and is medium and will be maintained. So, it's those two pieces. This is how we did overall in some groups of math. So, slightly, slightly lower, two point four on average rather than two point seven in English.
Your subgroups are struggling.
Yep. Especially students on that. So, EAP. So, EAP is the Early Assessment Program. So, what that is, is the UCCSUs used to ask juniors certain questions in math and in English, and if you scored up to a certain standard, that counted as kind of your entrance exam for those subjects. If you scored poorly, you were required to remediate. So, you might show up and you have to take a remediation course. So, now with the CAS, those questions are included. It's all in here. So, in the past, students could opt to take those extra fifteen questions or not. Now, it's just all embedded. And the way it works is, so these results are the exact same from the first slide, except here, we've taken out third through eighth graders. These are only eleventh graders. So, those who scored at the exceeded standard, exceeded the standard, that level, those are the students that are considered ready, all ready. So, they don't have to take remedial course.
They don't have to take, well, if a student isn't considered ready but takes the math placement or English placement, they can place.
So, there's a variety of ways they can meet it. Yeah. So, this group right here, those that, those that met the standard are considered conditionally ready. So, there are ways that you can meet that condition and become ready. So, one of those in English is, there's a class called Expository Reading and Writing in Context, ERWC, that the CSUs put out. Our high schools use that course. Students who take that course, who are conditionally ready and pass with a passing grade, are now considered ready. They don't have to take a remedial course. And there's other ways to do it. There's AP results, there's SAT results, there's other things that factor in that can override this. But that's what this is. So, it's the same test, same results, it's not a different test. You just take the results and use them slightly differently. So, math, again, slightly lower, only thirteen percent of our juniors in math and now seniors considered ready. Twenty-six point eight percent are conditionally ready.
So, what's interesting about that is, I think, that you, you're dealing with the same body of students. It's just that they're taking a different course examination. So, it's really good data that are, are, if you look at a trend line when they start taking these courses at third grade, in English, that's the highest score. We peak out at eleventh grade, which is what you would kind of hope to see is a growth that we, there's a, there's a gradual climb that takes place from the time they take it in third grade to the time they finish. There isn't so much in mathematics. What's different for us than in other districts is that there's often not a climb in English. Wherever they scored in third grade is pretty much what you see in eleventh grade. So, so there are, there are elements that are happening when kids get to the secondary district. Because remember, a lot of our kids are not coming from our district. There are elements that take place that are leading this, this movement.
In English Language Arts.
In English Language Arts.
And math? And math just gets harder and harder.
Yeah. Math is a different, math is a different discipline. Well, it's an integrated discipline, but there's three integrated different disciplines each year.
Right.
Where English is building on the same, the same basic core content.
And what's interesting is between eighth grade year and eleventh grade year, we have no empirical results to look at to see how they're doing. So, this eleventh grade year is kind of shot in the dark to see where we are. We are, for English, using a Renaissance learning assessments to give us information ninth and tenth grade year. But for math, besides teacher-created common assessments, which is what our two high schools are working on, without that, it's a complete, you know, sum of that. So, now I'm gonna show you two controversial slides, so don't focus a lot on these. But I'm showing you every grade and then I'll show you every school. So, we can do this with illuminate. So, I'm just, I'm just giving you an example. We can break this down to the, to the smallest level, down to the student level. Not that we're necessarily here comparing, but.
How about kids whose last name starts with B? I mean, for that long.
And this information is available to the public. Anyone can dig in and get this information.
Not quite like this. I mean, it is now, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Not quite like this. From that state website, you have to pull these up each individually on your own, you know, write it on paper, figure it out. They can't, they can't crunch things like this. And like I said before, if you go to the state website, it's each charter, each district separate. This is all together. Right? So, again, you can see overall district, sixty, forty, meeting standard not, and then where we are by grade. So, Gary was just mentioning this. So, in English, we have this, this trend. Started off at forty-eight percent, met the standard, now seventy. So, for a variety of reasons, that grows. And not only, not only is this promising, but each year, the target moves. So, students can't score at the same level each subsequent year and maintain their status. They have to grow. You have to grow grade level. So, this is not only students meeting that, that moving target, this is more students rising up and meeting that requirement. And then to vice school, this is fun to look at. The PACs, it's just not fair right there. This is English again. I, I didn't put them in order. I could have put them in order, but I just can't believe I'm better than them. So, here's math by grade. And like Gary was saying, we kind of have the opposite trend. A little bit of growth, kind of stayed, a little bit of down. So, there's a variety of reasons for that, too.
That's so funny, though. It's almost just directly the opposite, you know, with those numbers. That's amazing.
And then this is math by school.
Actually, killing it.
So, look at their, their average, their average distance from three is a hundred point. All right. So, a synopsis, a summary of all of this. So, we.
Math is trying so hard, not proud.
So, we were maintaining, I present students meeting, seeing the standards. Obviously, we'd love to see improvement and growth there.
Right.
But in the new model, maintaining our status, maintaining our excellence is something to be, to be recognized upon. We also continue to outpace the county and the state overall, although we still have room to grow, we still have achievement gaps that persist. And our students, our English learners did increase slightly in ELA, but only a percentage of them. That was one group that showed a little bit of a move up. And again, although our high school math is higher than the county and the state, as Ellen noticed, it's still an area where improvement. So, what do we do from here? So, this is just a piece. This was just English and math on these state assessments. So, we continue to work with our LCAT development team. In December, the first of December, the dashboard will come out, which will contain a lot more information than just this. This will be a piece of it, but those are all the rest of the indicators. How are we doing with suspension, expulsion, climate, student engagement, all those types of things. So, we continue to use this, continue to use the information in illuminate to really dive down. Because if you just look at it in that broad picture, you're missing some trends. And one of the pieces that's hard, that's hard to look at here is cohort trends. So, the email I did receive from a parent looked at eighth grade, eighth grade student results at Pedalum Junior this year compared to eighth grade students the year prior. And there was a slight drop between eighth grade group, two years ago, and the eighth grade group last year. But if you actually go back and look at it, as seventh graders, those students scored at a certain level, and as eighth graders, they increased slightly. So, although as a group, they were slightly lower than the group before them, they maintained their achievements. So, it's interesting. You really gotta dive down and look at these cohorts, look at these trends, like that English one, how are these students doing each year? So, there's a lot, a lot of great information.
I mean, kids are individuals, obviously, and if you have the same teacher, the same methodology in your program, so they're gonna fluctuate a little bit, right? I mean, you get, it's like an athletic team. Sometimes you get that group that has all these kids that are just fully engaged and, you know, just way up there and new kids come through and you've got a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, to start, you can't just expect every class is always going to improve from this year to last year.
Right.
Because it's different. I mean, if you took the same class, eighth to ninth grade, you'd follow that, that group through fine. But this eighth grade class and last year's eighth grade class could be a lot different dynamics, huh?
I mean, you'll talk to any teacher, they'll tell you, they can tell you when they had that group that was extra rowdy, right, that came through. Or that higher student group.
I mean, it just stands to reason, right? So, I mean, it's not too statistically significant. I don't know anybody get to a level that.
Well, what's great about it is we can, we can tease all that out. So, anytime you're looking at data, you try to recognize, okay, was this, was this a year that I had a really high achieving group?
Right.
Atypical, what I normally see, or they have a really, you know, rough group or just.
Or did all our homes burn down in fires?
Right.
Yeah, and then.
Or how were they when I got them?
Right.
Or were they when I got them?
Exactly right.
And how'd they do after my instruction?
Big difference.
So, that's one of the things.
Well, I like that the parent reached out to you now to walk them through that, because that's what people don't do. They take some data, some snippets, some, some slide, run with it. It's nice they reached out.
Yeah. And then the spouse came to the LCAT meeting.
Yay. Do you think the math adoption, that it's just been in place, what, every day math for one year now?
Third year.
Oh. And CPM, it's happened three years as well?
CPM, well, CPM's been around longer. Some of the schools already had it, but yeah.
So, do you think with that adoption, like, that will help with those math trends going up? I mean, once teachers obviously get kind of to know that they're a killer in the mother and.
It should.
Kids are getting used to it.
We're still teaching kids who've never had Common Core in the earlier grades. So, yes, so with each year, those groups that have come through with Common Core.
That everyday math group who started, whatever, three years ago.
Yeah, we should. I mean, if you saw in the middle of the math, it started off at forty-seven and then it went up.
Right.
To fifty-three, it kind of topped out and then dropped back down. So, that, that, I haven't looked at that potential, could be that group coming through. Lots to watch.
Pretty interesting.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's great. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you very much. And a very nice clear presentation. Yes, thank you so much. You can follow.
They say that.
Oh, I went to LCAT. And then yesterday, I talked to a government class. And it was great.
That does not count.
It doesn't.
That doesn't count.
What? And coffee together.
Having coffee together is not. Let's see if we can list all the things of improvements we've cited. Okay. Thank you for comments from the public. Number nine, report on activities and correspondence of school board. I filled this early, so we're trying to pull it all out of recall now. Football games at Pedalum High, LCAT meeting, Ellen went to Casa and spoke to a government class. Phoebe's searching her calendar, bringing it's coming.
Oh, I went to the Casa Pedalum High girls volleyball game.
Oh, right. Yeah, that was amazing, I heard.
And PAF for girls' sporting event was awesome. PAF, it was in MDC.
I was outside. You could, you stand your room only inside.
Went five games.
Wow.
And one or something.
I directed, I directed a bunch of people from the class of seventy-three and forty-fifth for a year again to the old high school field to try to relive last year.
Okay, so you just took people off. It looks like.
They were all sent to a person. Why didn't we get to plan anything like that? Well, it hadn't been a turf, but.
You're a good master.
Yes, right, right.
All right. Great, great ambassador you are.
Yeah.
All right. Item ten, approval of consent agenda by consular motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Takes a sound, this time I won't whiff them. Item eleven, action items, eleven point one, administration resources, eleven point one point one, provisional internship permit request for Andrea Laren to teach special education classes at McNear and Valley Vista Elementary Schools for the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen school year.
What is her, is she, as an intern, she's already in school, she's already taking special ed classes, what's the deal?
Yeah, this is a, this is a PIP credential. She's taking classes right now as a teacher, as an intern. As a teacher as an intern, it's just a hard to fill position right now as special.
I know. I've been telling everybody, no one wants to teach a special ed.
They're doing accelerated programs now. They are.
I know they are. Because it used to be, you could get your language for a year.
No certifications.
To become a special teacher, you had an extra year. But now it's, they kind of have rolled it into it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven point two, business services, eleven point two point one, purchase orders. Someone?
Second.
Any issues with purchase orders?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven point three, educational services, eleven point three point one. Second reading and adoption of Pedalina Joint Union High School's district core CTE anatomy. It could be all.
Sure. Second.
Questions, comments, issues? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven point three point two, second reading and adoption of Pedalina Joint Union High School's district core Pedalina High. Honors to principals on engineering.
Sure.
Second.
That's awesome. Questions, comments, issues?
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twelve, discussion information only, twelve point one, business services, twelve point one point one. Public self-insured annual report for the Redwood Empire School Insurance Group, Fosse.
It's just an annual report that reflects how Fosse is doing. And as you can see there, it's physically quite sound. So we'll get through them.
Twelve point one point two, new administrative regulation, AR three two three zero, federal grant funds. Questions or comments or?
Board policy was up above, I've got it.
Thought. Twelve point two, educational services, twelve point two point one, amended board policy. First reading for board policy, six one, six three point two, annual to school. Didn't look like it really changed.
We did.
And we. No, we were below, because of the bottom.
We had one sentence in the first paragraph. And then when you see the AR later, you got the details about that sentence.
Got it, okay. Alright. Item thirteen, future business. What you got here?
Nothing as of right now.
Okay. Are we gonna go back and talk about the sexual harassment policy in some?
Those are all coming back.
Next month? Okay. Good.
So just an FYI, so the next board meeting, remember the. We'll be bringing, from each of the charters and the district, the local indicators that we submit to the state through the dashboard. So there's the state indicators, and then the local indicators. They have to come to a board meeting before they're submitted. And it's not a voting item, but they do want it as a discussion. So if there's any questions, you can look at it and talk about it.
Okay.
So that's something that's new that we're in the process of.
Gary, at some point, could we get an update on athletic transportation?
Yes.
I've heard great things, so thank you, everyone who's been working on it. Especially transportation, I know it's been a lot of negotiations, but I heard from the fall sports at both high schools, people were very appreciative and.
Yeah, you guys just have a brief.
Yes, at some point, I mean.
Field trips, maybe you could open up a whole new world. Back to the future, Chris. Now, see, you don't be taking students to school.
We have nothing to report on a closed session. We are not gonna be convened, so we are done. Seven oh four.